Riverview Golf Course located on the beautiful O'Conne River is open to the public, seven days a week from 7 till 7, and you can play all day for just $25. Riverview Golf Course opened in the spring of 1977 and has been enjoyed by thousands since. Come on out to Riverview Golf Course today off Highway 19 at Riverview Drive, just two miles off I-16, exit 54. Riverview Golf Course in Dublin, making memories every day. From humble beginnings with a desire to serve the Dudley community, Bank of Dudley has grown to five locations, serving Lawrence, Twigs, and surrounding counties. Serving our community since 1905, the Bank of Dudley is looking forward to its second century of community banking. Drop in today to any of our five locations, Jeffersonville, Dudley, East Dublin, Veterans Boulevard, and downtown Dublin. Bank of Dudley, Member FDIC, and an equal housing lender.
Now we're going to hear from our Lawrence County School Board District 2 candidates. Tonight we have Mr. James Brown, Mr. Eric Shepherd, and Mr. Locke Wilford. Mr. Brown, we're going to start with you. You have two minutes to make an opening statement.
Hello, I'm Reverend Dr. James Brown. I was born in Lawrence County, Georgia. My parents are L.P. and Evelyn Brown. I went to school here in Lawrence County School System. I was educated here. I graduated from Northwest Lawrence Elementary. After graduating from high school, I had the opportunity to join the United States Army. In the United States Army, I served there for 10 years. During that time, I was able to attend Seventh Army NSO Academy and graduated from it as a Seventh Army NSO Academy. SOLO Academy is similar to West Point, but it scaled down for non-commissioned officers. After 10 years in the service side, I was able to be employed with the Georgia Power Company. There I worked for a total of 37 years, retiring in 2016 as a Distribution Construction Coordinator. I am also married to Sherlyn Thomas Brown, and we have been married for 45 years, and we have four children and nine grandchildren. And during that time of being married and working at Georgia Power, I was also involved in my community. I was a foster parent for 25 years, and also was a volunteer fireman for the Montreux Fire Department. And I haven't just started serving my community. I've been involved in my community my entire lifetime, ever since I've been able to work and do something. My goal is to always help someone, and I'm truly blessed to be serving now on the Lawrence County Board of Education, representing District 2.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shepherd, you have two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Eric Shepherd, and I am the District 2 candidate for the Lawrence County Board of Education seat. I would like to start out by thanking TV35 for hosting this event tonight and giving each of us candidates the opportunity to speak. I would also like to thank Mr. Heath Taylor from the Dublin Lawrence Chamber of Commerce for moderating. Thank you, sir. And most importantly, I would like to thank all the people of Lawrence County who choose to watch this debate in an effort to get more insight on these candidates before making that all-important vote on June 9th. With that said, I want everybody to know that I'm not going to stand up here tonight like I know all the answers to all the questions and concerns surrounding our school system. I'm not going to pretend that I know every facet of education. I can instruct a teacher on what they should do to teach better or tell a school administrator how to be more effective in running a school. But I can tell you for 100% fact that what you will see tonight is a candidate that's real, that's relevant, and one who truly wants to work with our teachers, our school administrators, superintendent Garantow, and the other board members to ensure our students are receiving the best possible education Lawrence County can provide. I would be honored for the opportunity to serve as a District 2 representative on the Lawrence County Board of Education, and if elected, I can guarantee all of you that you will get a board member whose sole focus is on making our school system greater than it already is. My kids deserve it, and so do yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Wilford?
I'd like to thank TV35 and the chamber for hosting this forum. I'm Locke Wilford. You might know me better as the only dealer that you'll ever need, but I'd like to be the only school board member that you'll ever need. As general manager of two dealerships here in Dublin, I took the sales volume from 45 cars per month to over 180 cars a month, built two state-of-the-art dealerships, and had over 75 employees. I have 40 years of business experience, and that I will bring to the table. I know that I can take my business experience and help navigate us through the years to come and make wise decisions on our budget to best serve our school system. I've been on the board of the chamber, been on the board of the Easter Seals. I serve now on the United Way Board and the Dublin Rotary Board, and am president of next year, 21-22. Our dealership has been involved in community support, the United Way, Lawrence County Recreation Department out at Southern Pines, and others. Giving back is what we all should do. I'm an ordained minister, and I do lay preaching in churches around town. I have a passion for high-speed internet to the over 19,000 households in Lawrence County that do not have internet service. Elaine and I have five children, three daughter-in-laws, six grandchildren, and we're members at Rents Baptist Church. I'm one of 16 children. There's 12 girls, there's four of us boys. My daddy Epp was a farmer. We all learned to work hard, so my work ethic runs deep. We're given a firm foundation of Christian values, deep love and respect for God, family, friends, community, and country. My mother Millie made certain of that. I want to have a passion and vision for the foundation that I can draw from, from the business, experience, and the rest. 2020 vision, as we move forward to the future, please lock in your vote for Locke for Lawrence County School Board, District 2.
We're going to take a short break, and we'll be right back.
Lawrence County is home to lots of wonderful people and many thriving small towns and communities. Although our population size does not require an attorney to serve as probate judge, as a community that is green and growing, we deserve a judge that is dedicated, compassionate, and has spent years studying and practicing probate law. I am that candidate, and I want to serve you.
Hi, I'm Don Carswell, general manager of Dublin Nissan. We're open and we were never closed, and we are here for you.
Dublin Nissan will gladly pick up your car for service or deliver your new car to your home. Dublin Nissan is ready to help.
From Dublin Nissan to your driveway, we deliver.
Anywhere in the great state of Georgia.
Right now, get up to three months deferred payments.
That's on 11 Nissan models.
Remember, online or in person, Dublin Nissan, the only dealer you'll ever need.
Hey, I'm Glenn Redster with Hometown Supply. Hometown Supply located in downtown Dublin is here for all of your home and hardware needs.
We work with customers. I know sometimes times get tough. We work with you through those.
Local delivery is available for merchandise sold.
Anything that a customer needs, we take care of.
Just remember, if you can't do business at Hometown Supply, you just can't do business.
Mr. Shepherd, we're going to start our question round, and you will be first there. And our first question for you is, should candidates of local school boards of education be required to declare their political party?
I don't think so. I mean, it's a nonpartisan position. I don't see where political party has anything to do with providing education for our children. I don't see where the school board, I don't see where it would matter that, you know, what political party you represent or don't represent by being a member of the school board. I mean, the sole focus of the school board is to be there for the superintendent, to be there for our kids and for our schools, and to, you know, just to do what we can to help those guys do what they do in the classrooms and to help our students get the education that they deserve. I don't see where that affiliation would matter.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilford, should candidates of local school boards of education be required to declare their political party?
I think it's good the way it is. I think we ought to leave it. I don't think we need to declare a political party or a political allegiance. You know, our emphasis in our school system is to take care of our children, to make sure they're getting the proper education, to make sure our teachers are getting what they need, the tools they need, to get the job done. And I think dragging politics into it just makes it a lot worse. I know, even like you said earlier, this is not a debate. We're just trying to get people to know who we are. I'm not mad at either one of the gentlemen here. I don't have an axe to grind with them, so let's keep politics out of it and keep the children first.
Thank you, Mr. Wilford. Mr. Brown? Should candidates of local school boards of education be required to declare their political party?
No, I don't think that the school board members should declare whether they, what their political party is. We are not there to look upon each other whether they are Republican or Democrat. We are there as a group to do what's best for Lawrence County's school system. And to do that, we have to put all parties aside and work as a team and make sure that we support all of the staff, the administrators, and the teachers so that they'll be the best educator that they can for our children, so that they can get the best education in our school system. And we definitely have to support our superintendent.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilford, religion in schools, share your thoughts, please.
Well, I probably go back a pretty good ways when it came to school, and I remember my teachers in early grades, they prayed with us every morning. We saluted the flag, and we read the Bible. And it was a good thing for me. I'm a Christian. I know Christ is my Savior, and it wouldn't be bad if we make good influences on our children, have good morals and good strengths, and so I'm for keeping God in school.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, religion in schools?
Religion is very important. That is the backbone of this country, is religion. And I am an ordained minister, and I believe that religion should be in a position where kids can know what religion is. We have to also be mindful to follow the policies that are set by the state, because when we get into certain things that is controversial, we have to stay within the guidelines. But for religion being in school, yes, I'm really for that, to the point that we can do it and not overstep our bounds in doing it.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd?
Yeah, I mean, God is first in my life, and I know a lot of our students, teachers and administrators, I know they're Christ followers as well. I mean, I think we have religion in our schools. We take God, we take, you know, we take Jesus Christ everywhere we go. He's first and foremost, like I said, in most people's lives. And I mean, I think we got the freedom to express our religion now. We got that freedom in our schools. Can we mandate that it's, you know, that it's mandatory? I don't, I mean, like Mr. Brown says, there's rules and restrictions to that, but each student has the ability to worship at school, to pray at school, to show their faith at school. So I think that it's there. I think it's prevalent in our schools now. So yeah, I think that's a good thing to have religion in our schools.
Thank you, sir. We'll start with you this time, Mr. Brown. Early childhood education, middle school or high school in Lawrence County, which needs more attention now and why?
Early childhood education is at foremost, the most important, because if you reach a child at a younger age, head start is the beginning of learning for a child. And if they, if once they get in head start, then kind of going through the 12th grade, we have to set a foundation for the kids at a young age and let them build on that foundation from head start all the way through the 12th grade. Because as they move from one grade to the other, they are building on the foundation. They lend another block on the foundation of learning. So once they do get to high school, they should have a solid foundation so they can move on at whatever endeavor they want to do in life. They should have the education from the school system to be able to pursue that, do whatever they need to do.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd, early childhood education, middle school or high school in Lawrence County, which needs more attention today and why?
Yeah, I do think the foundation is important. I think the middle grades need more attention. That's the transition time for a lot of kids. A lot of changes going on, you know, in their lives personally at that time. I think we need to focus on the middle grades, just to prepare those kids for their growth that's going to happen from sixth to eighth grade. There's a lot of growth that happens right there. I think we work with those, we could work with those students a little more, preparing them for what they are going to run into in high school, and get them prepared to select a graduation path that's going to excel them through high school and keep them plugged in to the school and all the way through graduation. So I think we put a little more focus on the middle grades. I think that would definitely help the graduation rate moving forward.
Okay. Mr. Wilford, early childhood education, middle school or high school in Lawrence County, which needs more attention today and why?
Well, I think now and always, early education is no doubt the most important. We've got to give them the great foundation. I know that through the chamber, we were involved in the early development program here for quality rating for our daycares even, and we collected books and puzzles to get it to them on that foundational level. We know that if they're not at a third-grade reading level, when they reach the third grade, that's a good chance they might end up in prison. And so if we can get them while they're young and teach them to read, it's so important that these children learn how to read. And I know with me, and I'll tell you about it later, I know I struggled in school. I had a hard time because I didn't get a good foundation. So I flunked the second grade, the sixth grade, and dropped out in the 10th grade. And I'm thankful that someone encouraged me to go back to high school at night and get my education. I bought me a pocket dictionary, carried it everywhere I went. Every time I came to a word I didn't know, I underlined it. It became a reading vocabulary word for me. So I say, early and always, early education.
We're going to take a short break, and we'll be right back.
Hi, I'm Dr. Dustin Gay. I'm a local orthopedic surgeon with Houston Clinic Orthopedics, and we'd really like to invite everybody to come out to our new office facility to take a look at it. It's a larger space with physical therapy, and we're just excited to have it, and we'd love for people to come out and visit us.
Come by and see us today at our brand-new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
Portions of this program are brought to you by CurePoint Cancer Treatment, 2406 Bellevue Road in Dublin. At CurePoint Cancer Treatment, we're bringing you state-of-the-art cancer treatment right here at home. CurePoint Cancer Treatment, check us out on Facebook.
Hi, I'm Pam Tilery.
And I'm Jody Tanner.
And we are...
The TNT Group. We are now located at Remax Realty Team, and we would like to share our new slogan with you.
Our goal is to serve with compassion, guide with integrity, and inspire you to reach your real estate dreams.
And you can reach us at (478) 353-1234. Give us a call.
I'm Pam.
And I'm Jody.
And we are...
The TNT Group.
Do you believe the topics of homosexuality and alternative lifestyles should be excluded from the classrooms?
I certainly do. I think those subjects are to be taught at home with their parents, and they are to be handling that. I think that when you get into trying to bring in those different type lifestyles in a conservative town like we are and a conservative county that we are, I think it's just dangerous. And I think that we ought to stand on the Bible and what the Word of God teaches us, and we ought to skirt away from those areas and let mom and dad handle that. I know my mother and daddy handled it, and if you messed up, she would, they'd handle even more.
Mr. Brown, do you believe that the topics of homosexuality and alternative lifestyles should be excluded from the classroom?
Homosexuality and alternative lifestyle is something that have come to the forefront of this country, and whether we accept it or not, it's here. And it must be addressed. Not saying that it got to be addressed in the schools, but we need to have something in place where we can reach out to these boys and girls. And it may not be in the classroom in our public schools, but maybe have alternative schools, a school or some set up where we can help them to realize the road they are going down, and hopefully that we can give them some insight to steer them back on the right path that they need to go. But whether we, it's here, it's here, and we must address it if we got blinders on.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Shepherd, do you believe the topics of homosexuality and alternative lifestyles should be excluded from the classroom?
Absolutely. We can't put that on our teachers and administrators and counselors to speak to other parents' children on topics such as that. That's, like Mr. Wilford said, that needs to be talked about in the home. The kids need to be educated prior to coming to the school. Our teachers need to focus on what they got to do in the classroom to teach our kids what they're paid to teach them, and that's not the subject, so homosexuality or alternative lifestyles. So yeah, absolutely no to that in the classroom.
Thank you. I'm going to back up, Mr. Shepherd, and start with you on this question because I believe I skipped starting with you in that second round. So if you would, schools in Lawrence County, we have ours, they have theirs, let's, and let's was in quotation marks here, get to work together or consolidate, explain.
Oh, I mean, as far as consolidation goes, I mean, I don't think Lawrence County would have a choice once that was to take place if Dublin was to lose their charter. I'm all for the county schools. I grew up in the county schools. I graduated from East Lawrence. My kids are in the county schools now. My wife teaches in the county schools. So, you know, I'm all about keeping it separate. I think that, you know, there's a camaraderie between the county schools, and there's a same camaraderie they have in the city schools. So I think keeping it separate would be best for this community. Of course, it's about the students and what they need to succeed. If consolidation is what they need to succeed, then yeah, then consolidation is what we've got. But I think we've got two great school systems here with the students and they're succeeding, you know, separately, just fine.
Thank you. Mr. Wilford, schools in Lawrence County, we have ours, they have theirs, let's, let's in quotation marks, get to work together or consolidate, explain.
Well, I think we have two great school systems here. I have good friends that are involved in the city schools, and they're doing a great job in the city schools. And I have friends that are in the county schools. As a matter of fact, for a number of years, I used to go to the East Lawrence basketball games and watch the Young James deal play football, I mean, football games, and watch him play football and have a good time out there. But I think let's work together is what we need to do. I don't think we need to try to consolidate. We know what a controversial issue it is, and you think about being nonpartisan and partisan, you open that can of worms and see how people are going to go crazy. So I think we ought to leave well enough along, and let's just get together. Let's don't run each other down. Let's don't find fault and make fault. Let's try to work together and keep our children at the forefront and taking care of them.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, schools in Lawrence County, we have ours, they have theirs, let's get, let's together in quotations, let's get to work together or consolidate, and please explain.
I think that we should work together and help make each school system better. And we do have two great school systems here. Lawrence County is a good school system. Dublin High is a good school system. We have, and so far, consolidation is talked about, but it haven't came to the forefront where action need to take place. But we should not be so naive that if it come to the point that we have to consolidate, we don't want to wait till, if it mandated by the state that we have to consolidate, we should be proactive and have a plan in place so that it do come about, that it won't just, we won't be lost in shuffle. But for now and in the near future for us, I see it's good to have the camaraderie, but also to be able to compete against each other with the city schools and the county schools. And I think that it'll work out where we'll continue to go as it been going in the past.
We're going to take a short break, and we'll be right back.
Hi, I'm Matt Lake, and I want to be your next Lawrence County tax commissioner. I'm a forward thinker, and I'd like to implement some of these systems here in Lawrence County, one such being the implementation of a kiosk system to make it more convenient for you, the taxpayer. I don't believe we should settle for the status quo. The citizens of Lawrence County deserve better. Elect me, Matt Lake, your next tax commissioner here in Lawrence County. I'm Matt Lake, and I approve this message.
I thought I'd lost my business in that fire, but my agent was there before the flames were out. He said, "Together, we're going to rebuild." Our employees depended on it. My independent agent and auto owners made sure we didn't skip a beat. I mean, we didn't miss a single payroll. For whatever lies ahead, we're always there.
Curry Maffet Insurance, now located in downtown Dublin. Call (272) 1234.
Hurry home, boys. We got to go.
Let's see what you got, boys.
Hey, I got your text. What's the emergency?
What text? Where is my phone?
Oh, I think River wanted to play.
It's time for our closing statements, and we started with you, Mr. Brown, so I'm going to start with you on this. Mr. Shepherd, please remember that you have two minutes, and your time starts now.
I want to say it's been an honor and a blessing to be up here tonight with these two great men. I've enjoyed it, gentlemen. Thank y'all. Hopefully everyone that watches this debate now has a clear choice on who they want as their school board representative. So real quick, I just want to reiterate one more time what I want to do if elected. I said from the beginning, my sole focus if elected will be to work with our teachers and school administrators on creating the most innovative and exciting learning environment for our students. I want to do my part in building a school system where the students are excited to come to a school, to learn from teachers who have the skill sets and resources they need to create that excitement in the classroom. I spent most of my adult life teaching, mentoring, coaching, and building relationships with many of the kids in our community who attend schools in our system. And now I want to continue that work by doing my part in giving them the best education possible as a member of the Board of Education. In closing, I would like to say thank you for all the continued support and love that I've seen from this great community since I started this campaign. I hope and pray that I get the opportunity to serve you and work for you as the next school board member in District 2. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Wilford, two minutes.
Well, you might ask me, why in the world did I decide to run for Lawrence County School Board? With a large, loving family, my childhood was extremely happy, with the exception of some struggles that I had in school. Like I told you, I flunked the second grade, sixth grade, and dropped out of high school in the 10th grade. It made it difficult, but it gave me a drive to get back and have a determination to have some goals in life. After coming to know Christ as my personal Savior when I was 17 years old, I memorized two verses that made a tremendous difference in my life. "I can do all things through Christ which strengthens me." That's Philippians 4:13. I took that verse and I put it in my left pocket. And then, "My God shall supply all your needs according to his riches and glory." And that's Philippians 4:19. I put that verse in my right-hand pocket. I put both verses in my heart, and I watched God work in my life to challenge me to do. He was the provider, and he was the guidance that I needed to help me accomplish my goals. I spent three years at night at a high school adult program, getting my high school diploma with my pocket dictionary, and later on getting my college degree. I was fortunate to serve 12 years as a pastor. My deep desire is to make certain that all of our children... My deep desire is to make certain that all of our children have a level playing field and interest in their desire so that they can have a good education. I want to make sure we supply our teachers with what they need, and our parents, the tools they need for the children to accomplish their dream. A child goes to first grade all the way to 12th grade, and 40% in Lawrence County will graduate without having high-speed internet. And, and that's 12 years from now. You can imagine how they're not going to be equipped to face the high-tech world that we in. My favorite verse in the Bible is, "He that tooteth not his horn, the same shall not be tooted." And that's found in the Book of Tudoronomy, if you don't know where it is. I will, I will toot the horn for our 6,500 children and teachers. I will toot the horn for our 950 teachers and employees, and I will toot the horn for the 40% of population who don't have high-speed internet. And please, give me the opportunity to toot the horn for Lawrence County schools. You can toot your horn by voting for me, Locke Wilford, Lawrence County School Board, District Two.
Thank you, Mr. Wilford. Mr. Brown? You have two minutes.
Being on Lawrence County Board of Education mean a lot to me. I have, I have, we have done a lot since I've been on the board to move Lawrence County school system forward. And I read a book once when I was a young man that impacted me, and that book was, "I am Third. God First, Family and Friends are Second, and You are Third." And that's where I put myself in anything, any endeavor that I is involved in, I am Third. We put, I put God first, and the, and the family and friends, and the school system seven, and I am third. And if I put it in that perspective, everything I do is looking out for the children, the administrators, the teachers, and who all is involved in our school system. We have a great school system, but we can be, we can always, there's room for improvement. And as we continue, if, if you vote for me as the candidate, as the, to continue doing what I'm doing as the District Two Representative for the Lawrence County School Board, I can assure you that we, the best is yet to come. We are, we are moving forward, and as we move forward, everyone is moving forward well for us, and we will be great in 2021 and beyond. Thank you, and I ask for your support and your vote on June the 9th. If you will, vote for Reverend James Brown, so I continue to do what I have started in, in the Lawrence County school system, to move our system forward so that we can be the best that we can be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd, and thank you, Mr. Wilford, and thank you for joining us. And that concludes our Lawrence County School Board District Two Candidate Forum. We'll be right back after this short message.
Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County is here to help you with all of your financial needs. Our team knows what it takes to make life easy and convenient, and will help you get set up with our mobile and online banking. We founded Community Bank on common sense banking and a dedication to help people just like you. Our lender, Amy Thompson, Loan Officer, Gail Rainey, along with our Assistant Vice President, Ryan Lastinger, Executive Vice President, Brian Basemore, and President/CEO Chuck Harwell know what it takes to make life easy and convenient and can help you with loans for almost everything, from your automobile, home, land, or any financial goals you have. Come visit us today. Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County, where common sense banking never goes out of style.
Hey, want a successful career? Start with an education that puts you front and center with hands-on experience, an education that will prepare you for opportunity in two years or less, an education that's fast and affordable. Most OFTC students graduate debt-free thanks to the Hope Career Grant, which offers free tuition in more than 63 programs. Think differently about college. Choose OFTC for an education that's fast, local, and debt-free. OFTC is an equal opportunity institution.
Hello, I'm Darren Keane with Clemson Keane Insurance. And many of us do not like to talk about it, but no family needs to go without a life insurance program. Show your family how much you love them by preparing in advance with a life insurance program. Clemson Keane Insurance can help you with term insurance or permanent insurance. Regardless of your need, your age, or where you may be in life, life insurance is a critical part of financial planning for you and your family. Please give us a call at Clemson Keane Insurance, 272-8019.